Parking spot in Family Foods. What happens then if they decide to go to a different store? Because they can't find the spot because the other people are there. Sure, you get... They may want a discount store, but you don't maintain Family Foods. You don't maintain the culture that we have. For what? For money. For money. I'm sorry. It's never been an answer. It can't be an answer. If you do this, and it's voted, a tie vote, there's only one person to blame. Mayor Russell.
Thank you. George Winsome. Mike Baird. Dale Williams. And Laura Hall, which I'll be in, okay?
George Winsome, 29W463, Amber Lane. Hello again. Most of the people that are here are opting out, and we'd like you to opt out. They've done their research. We've seen professional attorneys. We've seen counselors, therapists. We've seen schools, principal. We've seen our chief of police. I mean, wow. Some real great professionals and just some regular Joes like me that did my research online. And every time you hit the pros and cons of recreational cannabis, it's one pro, money. Maybe a second pro will reduce illegal cartel drug, whatever, trafficking. And then there's ten to twelve negatives. Wow. The percentages seems kind of academic to me. So, and that's the whole page. You go online, you'll never find more than two or three pros. And two of them, they can't even prove it. The one thing they can prove, some towns are making money, some towns aren't. There's plenty of towns that say they're going to make this much money and end up not even getting close. So, like Bob said, I agree with him. The money is never the reason. It's not a good reason yet. Conscious might help. We're in the black. We don't need the money. We don't need the money to help our police department. Because there's going to be other towns that are going to have it, and there's going to be people driving high through our town. Chief Perrot, Toronto, and his team have done a great job, as well as our other, you know, fire department and other first responders. If we, if our citizens want to get high, go to Winfield. It's fifteen minutes from here. Go to Aurora. It's fifteen minutes from here. There's no doubt that the majority of people that I've spoken to and my friends have spoken to are against this. There's no question about it. So I'm asking those that have decided to vote, to opt in, to please rethink what you're doing for this town that just won an award for, I don't know, safest, nicest town in Illinois or DuPage County. Let's keep that going. This is not needed. And maybe the young gentleman that said, hey, let's get rid of the alcohol too, and the alcohol for that too. I grew up on a dry town park bridge. It's a great city. Thank you.
Mike Baird, 29W420, Town Line Road. I agree with both Bob to spoke, and that George, and all the others, opt out. I'd like to remind each of you guys, Alderman and Mayor, that each, all of you took an oath to protect the Constitution and the citizens. If you vote tonight for allowing recreational marijuana dispensary in Warrenville, you're disregarding your oath and putting our, all our residents at risk. And you're also completely disregarding Police the Chief, Toronto, and his strong case against this that he made last week in his forty-four years of experience. He said last week, and I quote, "No good can come of this." So I'm really puzzled as to why the four votes, including you and Mayor, last week of why when the police, the chief, chief of police has stated that no good can come of this, and yet here you are because of the money issue looking to pass this through. It's ridiculous. I'll reiterate that one of your comments last week was that it's highly unlikely that one would come here, and no one has ever contacted the city yet and regarished a license for this. That's a ridiculous comment because it's like me saying, no one has ever asked me to buy my house, and I haven't ever put it on the market. That's like saying, that makes no sense. I would rather not see one here at all, and it has one, a zero chance of coming here. I also want to publicly thank Alderman Ashauer, Alderman Wilson, and Alderman Davos last week for their opt-out votes and their efforts to protect our community and our children. Thank you for those votes. Mayor Russell, last week you said that, well, we can't please everyone, but how about you just please the majority? Everybody that's been here tonight and all the other meetings I've attended, it's been twelve to twenty people in the opt-out and about four to six in the opt-in. So why can't we please the majority? Even several Aldermen have stated that it's been eight to one or ten to two against, against the opt-in for, for their awards. So I'd like to know from each of the Aldermen if they've actually polled their awards. I've also sent out an email to a few of you, and you've responded to my emails. I appreciate that, but have you actually talked to your ward and your residents to see what they're actually saying? Or you just went down to the late shop to take a poll there? Imagine it'd be very different there. So why can't we opt out for the first year and put it on the ballot for 2020 in November? This is what makes, this is what makes sense to me, that we, the people and residents, will actually have a say in the matter. And I'd like for someone to get back to me on that from the, from the office, from John, or someone to answer that question for me. What's, what would that take to get this on the ballot? And that way, the decision doesn't rest just on you guys, but it's we, the people, decided. And if it's an opt-in of we, the people, then it is what it is. But why can't we take that from your plates and put it on ours where it deserves, where it rightly deserves? Lastly, you all, you all of you need to remember who you work for. We, the people, that's who you all work for. We, us. You are not self-employed. You don't get to just make the decision for yourself today. That's us. We elected you. We voted you in. And if you don't protect us, we will find Alderman, and we will find a mayor who will do so. So do your job tonight and vote for opt-out.
Dale Williams, Three South, 435, Briggs, in Warrenville. Appreciate your responsibility as a council, and would just respectfully ask that you consider the defining nature, again, as you have clearly already been dealing with it through your subcommittee process, but it is a defining issue. And putting the impetus of approval on sale of recreational cannabis, I do not see as something that will enhance the city or be of benefit to its citizens in, in, in the hole. I think some of the comments have been made, that cannabis, just tonight, somebody said it is a harmless substance. Nothing could be farther from the truth. It is quite clear that it is not a harmless substance, and there are any number of authoritative sources that definitively spell out the risks and the dangers. I've highlighted many of those in previous meetings and will not repeat those pieces of information. I, I've continued to study, as many have asked me, and they say we need to become educated. I've continued to read. The FBI, on August fifteenth, 2019, released a statement concerning the increased threat of public corruption in states where cannabis has been, and those states where it is going to be approved. The DOJ ATF released a statement on September twenty-seventh, 2019, specifically about an example of a armed robbery that was prosecuted in downtown Seattle. Just one concrete example. Again, some have said there's, there's no examples of violent crime. Well, there is, if you go and look for them. In addition to that, there is information in the minutes that indicate that you do have responsibility to think about financial impacts for the city. And I appreciate the fact that you want to have a diverse tax base, tries to ease burden on property owners. It's not a bad thing, but we have said no to other opportunities. And opportunities may or may not be good by the nature of their location or the impact on traffic, et cetera. I, I think there is a, there is a component beyond just those issues, whether it's gambling or things like that, that the city has occasionally said no to in the past. There are things that I believe do create a challenge for community and would ask the city to ask themselves whether the, again, the impact would be unnecessarily harsh. It has been pointed out, as the reports and packets were distributed initially back into the zoning commission, that we're not like a lot of other towns. One feels different in some respects. We don't have the business space that a lot of other towns, large particularly, have. Even those larger towns have made a case to say no, if in places like Aurora, Evanston, places like that. But largely residential community, and understand that it creates a tax burden potentially on property owners. But nonetheless, that being the case, if you put a dispenser in the area, you are creating a, a larger impact on what is a very large residential population. And there were concerns even amongst the land commission about potential location of that in areas where it would affect high-density population groups. There were some comments that were made relative to the black market controlling a hundred percent of the sales, as far as I'm concerned, when it comes to drugs and those kinds of things. I'm not interested in getting in on the action or being a part of that. I would encourage us to see that as something that needs to be dealt with in a long course of perspective. While it is true that it is going to be legalized, just because it is going to be legalized by the state of Illinois, doesn't mean that we need to compound that by approving it here. The logic would seem to be strained, because if the logic is, well, it's legal, so we might as well make the taxes to offset the impact, what would be the difference? And not trying to be, you know, philanthropic, but what would be the difference from legalization of prostitution? The argument was made, people will know more about what the product they're getting, it'll be, you know, it'll be tested and be labeled and all of that. Some of the same arguments have been made for legalization of prostitution in various countries around the world, as well as various states where it's been proposed. The logic isn't sound. It's not, it's not, it's not a good, it's not a good thing for the city. The point that the city can withdraw a special use permit, that is true, given the nature of the, the city's laws, that is possible. But I would say that if businesses drops the kind of money that we've been talking about they would have to drop, they are not going to take that sitting down. Cost of litigation, administrative expenses would likely be sizable to actually get a special use permit withdrawn. Nevertheless, as we think through those issues, just the increase in, in the impact, it's unknown, I think adds to, to the decision that would be best for us to, to refrain. Some people say, well, wait and see. I'll be honest, I won't hide my agenda. I don't want to wait and see. I don't ever want to see it. And there, there was a comment made that it may never happen. Well, I'd love to just go make sure that it doesn't happen, and I just urge you to make that decision. I am concerned about young people. There's no question, there was a comment made about young people in the last meeting about one of the JAMA particles, JAMA Psychiatry, February thirteenth, 2019, recognizes that legalization of these kinds of drugs and or the use of these drugs obviously puts a larger number of youth at risk for various mental health issues. I just continue to research and study, want to make sure that I'm speaking, you know, factually when I, when I say something. I make mistakes like everybody, but looking at the material, honestly, honestly, I urge you to just know to approve and sell recreational cannabis in Warrenville. Thank you for your time.
Laura, I know you had a different topic. You want to wait till the end. We have one more person who wants to speak on this topic. We might as well be done. Christine Ryan, came in a little bit late, Christine.
I don't have a fancy speech prepared, but I'm all for it. Opt in. It's personal choice. I think it should remain a personal choice. Everybody talks about the kids. You're probably not even going to know if a dispensary is here. You can't smoke it there. The kids are going to be fine. There's no difference, as far as I'm concerned, than having all these liquor stores. It's a personal choice. If you don't want to smoke it, then don't smoke it. I don't know what the analogy was to Family Foods, but I bet their revenue will increase due to all the snacks and pizzas that people are going to buy. It's not going to do anything. And that, well, Colorado, I would really be interested in seeing what other factors led to the demise of that town. You can't just put it all on one factor. But it's not the devil. It's not going to be the demise of this town. It's, it is what it is. You're not even going to notice it. So opt in. Give people the choice. If they want to smoke it, they'll smoke it. If they don't want to, then they won't. I mean, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, you can hold it, Laura. It's a little better if you pull it out.
I'll just slide it forward a little bit. I was, I am here as what someone once told me is a tab, a temporarily able-bodied individual. I'm wanting to talk very briefly about Acorn Van service and ride sharing. You're, you're facing a time of some changes, maybe with those programs. I just wanted to try to have us think for a moment about what our lives, how our lives would be different if we had to plan two days ahead to call for a ride to go to the grocery store every time we needed to go to the grocery store. I would have to have a standing daily ride to the grocery store if that were the case, or paying upwards of ten, fifteen dollars a round trip to get to a doctor's office or for tests at the hospital, any other, a haircut, you know? Or waiting for your ride home after that haircut for forty minutes or so while the car that you were waiting for was driving around, picking up and dropping off and, you know? It's, it makes life infinitely more challenging for people who are older or have disabilities and still have a life to live and need to get around. And things like Lyft and Uber may be faster, but they are more expensive, and they are. You're not dealing with a driver who's been vetted by a service or your community. There's that little bit of nervousness sometimes about who that driver is that's coming. So without delaying your business really any further, I, I just, I hope that going forward, it will be possible to come to some better plan of service for people who really need it, and I suspect that there'll be more of us who are aging and having things happen. You know, things can change in an instant about our own mobility. And that it would be a wonderful thing to make it easier for people to get around the, the areas they need to go to. I don't know whether a subsidy would be possible to be considered when the city is going to have a less expensive contract supposedly with Ride to Page. There may be other models out there that I don't know anything about, but I just would like you to really think about what it would mean to have better transportation for the people in the community who need it. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Laura, you provided a nice segue for some additional information from our Assistant City Administrator on item six G, which is the item that you talked about. Christina, you've got some answers to some questions from the council from last night?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last week at the meeting, we discussed the Ride to Page and Acorn program, and there were some follow-up questions from some of the council about the, first off, the, the number of riders between the age of sixty and sixty-five. As noted last week, the Ride to Page program for seniors of sixty-five and over, the Acorn program is sixty and over. I did reach out and talk to representatives of Ride to Page, and we can grandfather in current registered riders that are between sixty and sixty-five and choose to allow them in the program. So that will become part of the plan that I bring forward to the council at a later date. Just as an additional comment or note, one of the questions was of the four registered riders between sixty and sixty-five, how many are regular riders? It's two have framed the program in the last ninety days out of four. And the other question had to do with the discount for three or more riders and how that works. Essentially, the first person that is scheduling the ride would pay the full fare. The second person is considered a companion and would ride free. Anybody, third person and beyond would pay a dollar fifty for the trip each way. And then they can divvy up the overall cost that that first person pays amongst them as they see fit.
Okay. Any questions for Christina on that item? Thank you, Christina.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then to official and staff comments of the beginning of the mayor. First thing I'd like to say is to, to everyone who's got ahold of any of us on the issue of cannabis opting in, opting out, thank you for your thoughtful comments. I've received a lot of emails, I've had conversations, I've come to meetings where people talk, I've both sides of the issue very respectfully and thoughtfully, and I appreciate that. That's what I expect from Warrenville. Obviously, this is going to go one way or the other. Some people are going to walk out shaking their heads, and others are going to walk out smiling. That's the way it is. Our job is to make a decision. Hopefully, we will do that tonight. As Vivian Mann used to say, whenever there was a third issue, Warrenville will be here. Either way, we will continue. We will be fine. I believe that's the truth. So we will move on. But again, thank you to everyone who sent an email or stopped for a conversation or came to a meeting. That's appreciated. That's being a good citizen, and sometimes you'll be pleased with the results, sometimes not, but I can't guarantee everyone will always be happy. Couple of other things. Alderman Wyder, holidays Friday from six a.m. in front of the Park District there. Santa will be here, obviously, the usual fun with the rides, the food, free hot chocolate, fires, companionship, entertainment, a nice little family event. The weather's supposed to be relatively mild this year. That will be a nice thing. We will light the community tree. That's always a nice thing, a lot of fun, so everyone is welcome. There's no charge to attend, and it is a great family thing for the community. We have also our community calendar coming out again this year, the fifteenth year. Every year, we manage to find a support to underwrite the cost of this, so it doesn't cost the community anything. We find volunteers to put it together. This year again, Keith and Deborah Swindon did the photography and the year layout, and we have a corporate sponsor who paid for the printing. It will be available beginning the fifteenth of December here at City Hall, at school, at the library, in the Park District. So look forward. We've had some great photographs of the city of Warrenville that I'm sure you recognize some of the spots when you see them in the photographs. Keith is a very gifted photographer. Did a great job again this year. We also have Toys for Tots, and we have Christmas sharing opportunities to share your joy with those that maybe are a little bit less fortunate this year. So if you have the opportunity to participate in either one of those things, Toys for Tots, of course, you can drop off at the police station during the regular business hours. New gifts for children that have our original package, and you can find out the details by calling the department and asking about that. A great little program. So those are good things to help spread the joy of the holidays to those who maybe are having a little more difficult time. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk? Thank you, Treasurer.
Yeah, for those who like the Acorn format, there's, the Winfield Township has a similar program. It's a, it goes to slightly different locations, but it does serve groceries and doctors and hospitals. And it's a similar type of van, and, and it services available during the day, but if you like the personal touch, that's an alternative.
Thank you. Alderman. Alderman Kuschel?
Thanks. I was made aware that folks who may need to recycle broken or used holiday lights can use them at the lower level of the Park District. I've seen some questions posted online, social media, people in other towns, but I think we have them here in town, the Park District. So, yeah, you can drop off there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Goodman?
Just slightly more information on the Toys for Tots program. I think you just mentioned that, but just to give a little bit more detail, the drop off at the police department goes from now until noon on December thirteenth, at which point they'll take everything that they have collected. They only are collecting new unwrapped toys and books in their original packaging, anything that's appropriate for newborns to twelve years old. They're not collecting cash donations, although you can do so online on the Toys for Tots website. And we really appreciate the police department for doing this. Thank you.
Okay. City Administrator?
Thank you. Two quick things. Not only is the city a collection point for some of those great holiday programs you were just talking about, but the city employees also contribute. I'm always proud to see all the donations that our employees make for Christmas sharing, Toys for Tots. Someone's also given some other things through our professional association. So it's a great time for giving, but just to let everybody know, your city employees also to give back to the community, and I think it's a great thing for them to do. They're always very involved. Second thing, I'm not going to have the title right, but since we have a lot of people here, I'm going to remind everybody, we will have, or we still have, an opening for a vehicle maintenance technician, my close Phil. Thank you. Like I said, a fleet management technician position we have been trying to fill. It's somewhat of a niche, our supervisor mechanic retired last, the end of June, and we've had a vacancy. We've changed the position a little bit, so if you know anyone that's interested, please let us know. Get ahold of the city, and we will have that reposted online soon. Thank you.
Thank you, John. City Attorney? Thank you, Clerk. Move on then to the agenda for this evening. Alderman Wyder?
Yeah, I understand there's a couple Aldermen that, or Aldermen that would like to remove items C and D. I don't know if they need to be named before I make the motion for the, the rest of the agenda, but I move to approve the agenda for the December second, two thousand nineteen City Council regular meeting. Second.
Motion in a second, that is removing C and D from.
Correct.
Motion in a second. Official comments? Alderman Wyder in second vice. Alderman Wilson. Colonel Alderman Wilson may not want to remove that, he's going to vote against him. Oh, to the agenda. Okay. All right, very good. All right. Have you got that, Clerk? Thank you. Okay. So we have the consent agenda as altered, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a couple of sets of minutes that need approval this evening also. Alderman Wyder?
Motion to approve the minutes of the November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen City Council regular meeting, and to approve the minutes of the November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen Public Safety and Finance Committee regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. Any discussion of those minutes? Can see Donald in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. The consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item six A, offer first meeting of the two, two thousand nineteen property tax Item 6A, offer first reading of the 2019 Property Tax Levy Ordinance 02019-60 for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019 and ending April 30th, 2020. Excuse me. B, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02019-61, reducing the number of Class A II liquor licenses from 10 to 9. E, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02019-64, revising the schedule of job classifications and authorized personnel strength for FY 2020. F, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2019-55, approving a renewal quote for city insurance coverages for the calendar year 2020 from Arthur J. Gallagher and Company at the amount of $475,997. G, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and direct the city attorney to draft a resolution continuing the Ride to Page program indefinitely and direct staff to create a plan retiring the Acorn van program effective April 30th, 2020. H, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve the request to solicit donations for the Special Olympics Illinois Law Enforcement Torch Fund 2020 calendar year of events. I, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve a request to fill a temporary sixth police sergeant position for the timeframe of mid-December 2019 through June 6th, 2020. J, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation authorize staff to begin advertising and to fill an accounting clerk to position within the finance department. K, receiving five minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on October 23rd, 2019. L, receiving five minutes of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on September 10th, 2019. M, receiving file report of invoices paid up to November 21st, 2019 in the amount of And authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before December 6th, 2019 in the amount Alderman Wyler?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bromel.
Second.
Motion in a second. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Wyler?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Kuschel?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go back to item 6C. Would someone like to make a motion, please? Alderman Goodman?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02019-62, amending Warrenville zoning ordinance regarding cannabis business establishments.
Second.
Motion in a second by Alderman Berry, discussion?
I believe another Alderman wanted to remove this item and asked me so that I believe Alderman Davalos should have the first discussion.
If she so wishes.
I will take that. I will take that. Thank you very much. Yeah, I just need to kind of sum up my thoughts just a little bit that have happened since, maybe we started this in August or September and having attended plan commission meetings, these meetings, having listened to you folks in different places, having read a lot, having thought a lot, having drilled down what this is really all about, this vote here, in the end, I am in favor of opting out of this and in one summary sentence, I guess I would say, as a Cubs fan, I just don't see a big W here. And as I look and I drill down about that, it's really, no matter what everybody said, it's really not about, our vote tonight is not about whether cannabis is good or bad, why, if it's better than alcohol or anything else. It's not about all of that stuff tonight. Everybody's going to have to discern what they're going to do. It's legal in Illinois. People in Warrenville will be smoking or ingesting or whatever cannabis, no matter how we vote here tonight. So we're going to have to figure out how to talk to our kids and other things and everyone's going to have to do that, no matter what this vote is, but this vote is about a dispensary. And as I think about it, there's no doubt, and I studied this back in the 60s at Mayo Clinic, there, I mean, there's no doubt that it's a psychotropic drug. You can compare it to all others, good, bad. There's a lot of great things about cannabis that we see from the medical cannabis point of view, but it definitely affects people. And my issue, as I've said here several times before, is driving. I'm not, anything that will increase people's attention span, or not span, but just their attention, their focus, driving is a big thing and I don't want to discuss if it's better or worse than alcohol or texting or drugs or anything else. It's just another thing out there that affects the driving, so that's what's on my mind. So, it's, well, how will it affect the city of Warrenville? How will it affect what our, especially first responders are? We've heard from the chief. We know that the EMS people could be involved, which means the fighter power is involved and a lot of this is going to happen whether we have a dispensary or not. And so that's why to counteract a lot of this, extra education and first responder situations. I mentioned last week that I think it's 8% of what the state is going to collect in taxes on cannabis will go back to municipalities, whether they have a dispensary or not, to offset some of this cost. So that's kind of why I didn't buy into the idea that's been expressed over the last few months, that we need to okay a dispensary to get the revenue to pay for the costs. I think we'll have money to pay for a lot of the costs if the state does what they say they're going to do. But as I listened, not only to the chief, but read a lot of information that was given out during the plan commission process, other things that the staff has given to us, information I found other places and whatever, I think there will be an effect on our police officers to, just to talk, because that's what the chief has mostly talked about, and I think there will be extra burden, task, responsibility on them with a dispensary. And I think part of this logically, there's going to be more people and more cars driving to a dispensary and that's going to have to be monitored. I mean, I don't know if it's just the parking, but I'm sure of the presence of a dispensary is going to create work for the police force in going out and monitoring parking lots. I know part of the state law had, you can't either ingest or smoke cannabis at that location in the parking lot, in public parks, on the freeway path. You know, you have an open container law like you do with alcohol, so someone's got to monitor that and that will be police officers. And so I can't help but think that while DuPage County, many communities have said yes, but